Welcome everybody to our meeting this morning. At this time, I'd like to call on Mr. Spence for our prayer.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we come to you today for guidance and wisdom as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion as we make decisions on behalf of Mecklenburg County. We pray that you will give us discernment to make the best decisions for the greater good. I pray for the blessings on this board, the citizens of this county, Mecklenburg County, and those who may come here to visit, work and or play. We ask all these things in your name. Amen.
We'll now call this meeting to order please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda or any additions or deletions on the agenda. Entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chair, so move.
All in favor of the motion say aye. All opposed, the motion carries. Hope everyone's had a chance to look at our June 9 minutes. Entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
Mr. Chair, so move.
Motion's been made, all in favor say aye. All opposed, the motion carries. Okay, I get the honor to present a resolution this morning. Y'all will let me slip by, you hear?
Honored Eve McCoy Randy Callahan on the occasion of her hundredth birthday. Whereas Eve McCoy Randy Callahan was born June 30, 1925, and has remained a lifelong dedicated resident of Mecklenburg County, celebrating her hundredth birthday this year. Whereas she ended up marrying Joseph Aaron Callahan, and together they lovingly raised five children and having blessed ten grandchildren, thirty-two great-grandchildren, twenty-five great-great-grandchildren, and three great-grand, great. Whereas Miss Callahan is known in church for her vibrant spirit. She never meets strange, shares a quick wit and a good joke, and affectionately keeps her family on their toes with her lively personnel. Whereas her remarkable attitude toward life, paired with her warmth, humor, and kindness, have made her a true beloved member of the community and a shining example of strength, grace, and compassion. And whereas Eve has long been a devoted member of the Mount Mount Baptist Church, enriching her congregation through her faith and service. May therefore be resolved by the Mecklenburg County Board of Supervisors. Eve McCoy Randy Callahan is officially recognized and honored on the milestone occasion of her hundredth birthday. Her century of life is a testament to enduring strength, grace, compassion, faith, and joy, and she serves as an inspiring example to all who know her. Congratulations.
Photo op's not over. Okay, planning and zoning, Robert?
We have an application by Holly Gill and James Lavant Gil family trust to rezone from residential R2 to agriculture to allow for veterinary dog and cat clinic. This property is identified as county tax number 128000-8-052 and partial record number 5015. This property is zoned as residential and is located on north side of Highway 58 and is approximately two tenths of a mile west of his intersection with Route 677, Wilkinson Road, election District 8, County of Mecklenburg, reference D book LR-25-247. And I believe the planning commission unanimous recommended to approve.
Okay. Anyone here wishing to speak on behalf of the application? Hearing no one, I will open the public hearing on this application. Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing no one, I'll close the public hearing wishes of District 8.
I make a motion that we approve this under the recommendations of the planning commission.
Okay. Everyone's heard the motion, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, the motion carries.
Received an application by John and Angela Heisen for a special exception permit to construct two recreational vehicle sites. This property identified as county tax number 217000-01-002. Partial record number 37141 is owned as agriculture located on north side of Robinson Road and is approximately one tenth of a mile north of his intersection with Annex Lane, election District 1, County of Mecklenburg, reference D book LR-18-1748. And I think the planning commission unanimous voted to approve.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak on behalf of this application?
Good morning, appreciate y'all giving some time.
Good morning.
I handed out some of the details about this. Basically, we are trying to expand a lot to accommodate two RVs. There are, within the little loop of Robinson Road down there, there are three other lots that already have two RVs on them. We want to use that lot because it's eventually going to become a residential lot, but for the next three to four years at least, we want to use it for RVs. We want to use it for RVs for Microsoft, I say Microsoft employees, you know, all the subcontractors and whatnot from Microsoft. But what we want to do is we want to be selective so that we have management level people in there so that we don't have to worry about trash on the ground, noise to the neighbors, and such like that. We screen people for that. We actually have right now two people that are interested in the lot. We've already done, it already again be prepared for a house lot, has 200 amp service, it's got a thousand gallon septic tank. I think y'all received a letter that said it was only a hundred gallon septic tank. And, but it's a thousand gallons and it's been approved and in fact re-inspected and approved. So it's, it's prepared for that. There's, there are some other objections that were presented to you and I've kind of outlined just some responses to them. I think they just misinterpreted some information that they had. Like I said, it's a thousand gallon septic tank, not a hundred gallon septic tank. There was a comment that there was a riverbed through it. That riverbed actually is just an old cart path. At one time, our farm or my wife's family farm that we found records back to the 1850s, about half of it was taken by the lake. And this was the cart path that went down to the lower farm. It wasn't a riverbed. There's no lake on top of the lake that drains down into it. We have feel some erosion in that ditch. There was a comment that we built up to put a septic lines in there. It's not. We graded the ditch, backfilled it, seeded it, put up silt fence to control the water flow. And it's at least 50 feet away from the septic design. And as men approved, you know, for the septic with that even being considered, it's not there. There was some comment about an osprey nest. And in this handout that I, I gave you, the osprey nest actually is about 1,500 feet further out the point from that area. And there was an objection that putting an additional residence in there would cause disruption to the osprey. There's already 15 houses there, our campers and cabins. So, I mean, one more shouldn't create that much of a disruption. But anyhow, we want to do this. As far as we know, the other six campers that are scattered throughout that circle, we don't, we've looked at the tax records. We don't see any mention of the campers on their tax listings. We have gone to the point that we had a building permit before we began it. We put in a proper electrical base. We put in a proper septic system. We have a water supply to it. We're not depending on sharing a well with anybody. So, all we can see out of it is that we're doing some good. And I'd appreciate your considerations. Any questions? No questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing for this application. Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing no one, I will close the public hearing wishes of District 1.
Upon the recommendation of the planning commission, I move that we receive special exception permit of Mr. John and Angela Heisen.
Okay. Everyone's heard the motion, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, the motion carries. Avery, I believe you are next with soil and water.
Thank you for the opportunity to come today. I'm speaking on behalf of the Lake Country Soil and Water Conservation District Board. Since its formation in 1996, we've been doing erosion settlement control plans, plan review portion for Mecklenburg County as well as Brunswick County. Over the years, of course, the development in Mecklenburg County has almost doubled. As well as our responsibilities, we also administer the agricultural BNP cost share program for the Department of Conservation Recreation. That program has also tripled. Just give you some numbers, since 96, we started off maybe $5,000 to devote to cost share for farmers and landowners. Today, 3.2 million. Last year, we had a record number of applicants, 87 applicants. That's a record for us. In the past, we might have received 40 or 50. In correlation to the road and settlement control plan, back in 96, we might get a road and settlement control plan every other month. So far this year, we reviewed 16 plans and approved them. That does not include any kind of correspondence or plan revisions that has to be made. Our board is concerned about the workload we're faced with. So I was explaining to them that currently is the county's responsibility to administer the erosion settlement control program. They do the administrative part, they also do the inspection part. Only thing we do is the plan review part. So they would like to ask the board supervisors to consider hiring their own plan reviewer and take that responsibility off the soil and water district. And that way we would focus on the DCR responsibilities we have. Is there any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Alex, you want to elaborate any on that?
All I'd say is, right now, it is not, there's no position available for that in, in our budget process, in, in the adopted budget. If we want to pursue this, there's no problem in doing so. We would just have to, you know, go into the next budget process thinking that is something that we want to achieve. I will say, the technical aspect of this job is significant. And so it is unlikely that there'd be somebody just sitting around in our community today who has that skillset available to them that we could hire, you know, in a two-week application period. More likely than not, and you know, certainly you've been through the process, so you know better than I do. But I think if we were to pursue this path, the most, the best recourse available to us would most likely be to get with an institution, presumably Virginia Tech or Virginia State, and kind of work with them to identify a student coming out of their program who would be interested in this area and essentially guarantee them employment opportunity when they graduate. Because that, those are the programs that are going to provide that kind of technical aptitude that is most likely to be able to walk in the door and know what they're looking at. Now, they're going to still have to get certified. Potential is there, I guess, where they could get certified while they're in school. But that would probably be our best path. So if we are projecting forward and, and thinking about assuming these responsibilities from the soil and water district, it would be in our best interest to look at it over a multi-year period so that we can kind of set up that program. And if we're thinking we want to do this in next year's budget, if we want to go ahead and, and say we're going to do that, then we would probably be able to make contact with those institutions this summer and get a student who would be a junior or headed into their senior year this fall. And, and you know, but doing that now would be an opportunity. If not, you're probably looking at the, the next year. If you adopt it in next year's budget process that we want to go forward with this, then it would be the year after that that we would probably be in a position to assume those responsibilities.
Okay. That certainly lays out a, a good foundation going forward. Avery, is it very time sensitive? I mean, is it? Is that reasonable for to wait another year?
I mean, yes, I mean, from y'all's standpoint, if you got it budgeted in, yes, that's, I would say yes. You know, currently, we receive a little bit of funding from the county to do the program. And as far as getting certified, you attend the Department of Environmental Quality courses and then you have to take for exam. I'm a combined administrator, so I can do administrative, plan review, and inspections. That was a four-hour exam, for instance. Once you get certified, they say you can review erosion settlement control plans, but I agree with Alex. I think you need somebody with a good foundation because there's a lot of engineering associated with it, just so they know what they're looking at. And I think our board is willing to work with you as long as we need to until y'all have somebody to fill that position.
So that would be actually a county employee that will work in conjunction with them, Alex? Am I correct on that?
So there's two different paths to pursue this. Path A would be a county employee. If that is done, then soil and water will be out of it entirely. All of, we would be, all of our program would be administered in-house there. We would get the plans, we would review the plans, we would approve the plans, we would inspect the plans. The other path available would be to sponsor an additional employee in their office or provide some level of funding towards an additional employee in their office who was sole responsibility would be this work. And then when that work is perhaps on any given week, may not consume the 40-hour block of employment time, those, that person could do other tasks for soil and water. And that would be a net benefit for them instead of, you know, if, and in our case, if they were a county employee, we would have them probably doing inspections in any period where they're not actually doing review. But soil and water, and they're could be doing whatever they need to do for them. So those are the two options available. One would be for us exclusive. The other one would be to sponsor some or all of the position in its house still in soil and water.
Okay. I guess the best route to take on this would be let their board maybe discuss and see what they think would be the most efficient for everybody involved. I kind of liked the second one you talked about where it's in-house with y'all, but that's y'all's decision on that. I don't, I don't know the dynamics and the demands and all that kind of thing here. So between you and Alex, Alex and their board, y'all can put that together, I would think, and come up with the best solution.
Avery, the, the increase in what you're doing is, I know we got Mecklenburg and Brunswick, but like 90% of it coming from Mecklenburg?
I'd say 85 to 90% comes to Mecklenburg producers, yes sir.
Versus Brunswick County?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And you working with the same amount of manpower you did 10 years ago with all this?
Yes, it's just myself and the office administrator.
With the big increase?
So that sounds like, you know, what we need to do going forward. Any input from any other board members on that? Maybe Alex, we can remember that to keep that in the budget next year. Y'all can decide on how it needs to be structured as far as personnel and where they are and what they're doing, what their duty is on, that kind of thing. I think y'all are best qualified to do that rather than us, for sure.
All right, we'll discuss it with the board.
Okay. Does that work?
Yes, sir.
All right, very good.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, we got Dominion Energy Presentation, Justin? Good to have you.
Good to be here. We were talking about it with our colleagues coming in, coming off of vacation. It's nowhere else I'd rather be. That's all right. Technology. While it's coming up, I'll just go ahead and, you know, say thank you again for having us. I am here with some colleagues of mine as well who can cover some other, you know, as far as subject matter experts in certain areas of the company. By all means, that, you know, once we wrap up, happy to answer any questions. You know, and not to prolong your meeting because I know everyone has schedules as well, but we can even have some sidebar's after if need be on certain topics. So by all means, we're here as a resource, so, you know, that's what we want to do. But thank you again for having us. I'm Justin Pope with Dominion Energy. Here today really just to give you an overview of kind of what we're doing across the company. I know there's, it is a lot going on and it's important for us to be able to relay that and have it be understandable to, to everyone. Not only the what we're doing, but why we're doing it. Because I think at certain times, you know, that's also something that could be lost in translation to everyone else. So, you know, what we do in the energy space is really important. I think we can all agree on that, we need electricity. It's what powers air every day, whether you're here in a government center, whether you're a local business owner, farmer, operating a data center. These are all familiar, familiar areas in which we operate. So it's very important and, you know, when we, when we flip the light switch every day, we expect it to come on. So a part of that is understanding that, you know, myself and probably many others here today make up what are, what is our 2.7 million plus customer base. You know, it's residences, businesses, and such. Quite a few customers we serve over the, mostly are what is called our DEV territory, Dominion, Virginia, which does include northeast North Carolina. It is growing. And I think we can, today hopefully, provide a little bit of insight into what we're doing to try to manage that, to try to, to try to, again, stay reliable and affordable throughout it all. And at the end of the day, it's, it's a mix of, of work that goes on, not only because of serving our customers directly, but even if you're a co-op customer, you technically have a dotted line to us from the generation that we create from our power stations and transmit across the grid. I provided, I know this is not the, a little bit of a busy graphic, but really just kind of trying to draw attention to a certain matter, which is we have quite a few areas of generation across the, the service territory here. You know, your major forms of energy does include, from our generation standpoint, our nuclear, natural gas, coal stations, our renewables, solar, wind, hydro, and battery storage. But it is scattered about. It is growing in order to meet that demand. And, and again, just, you know, here locally, I look, I know you're all aware of the two solar sites we have along with the transmission infrastructure that's growing to support the data centers. So again, it's, it's very busy. I know that also you've probably heard of the, the PJM reference, you know, when it comes to us operating the grid or working with PJM to ensure a reliable grid. PJM is, is the... PJM is, is the, basically oversees the transmission grid in a region that includes 13 states. They are the ones that manage the flow of electricity. We can generate it. They more or less oversee how it's spread out amongst the grid. So within that, not only are they managing it, but they're also providing us forecasts and what that looks like in the future as far as what they're seeing and what's going to be needed to meet the demand that's on the system. So you can see our Dominion zone there in purple, obviously. And on the next slide, you'll see a reference specifically to our zone based on one of the PJM for, the latest PJM forecast, which shows over the last few years of forecasting, you can see that number constantly ticking up as far as the load demand that is expected to increase over the years. We live within what is considered by PJM the highest load demand area in the nation. That's, that's nothing to sniff at. I mean, that is incredibly, incredibly important in order to address that and to make sure that we stay reliable and we can meet that demand. At the end of the day, any demand on our system comes back to us, and we have an obligation to serve it. So we have to find a way to make that happen as the energy provider. You'll see on the left-hand side, just one year ago, almost to the date, last July was what was a previous all-time record high in load demand, and over 23,000 megawatts that day. You'll also notice in the next dot to the right of that, this past January, we already surpassed that on our system, the demand on our system, in three consecutive days. If you remember the cold spell that came through this past January, January 21 through 23rd, the 23rd actually ended up being the highest to date. So again, these are forecasts, and it's not a scare tactic by any means. It's really just, it's a reality. It's what we're looking at. You know, you can forecast as well as you can, even you can see that ones that date back earlier, they didn't expect a few years ago the demand to be such as high as it is now as far as expectation goes. These demand forecasts are, are really astronomical in the sense that this is the largest growth that we're expecting on our system demand, that is, since World War II. So that's, that's another pretty large figure there to think about. And we all know that a few weeks ago in June, there were some, also a hot stretch of days there too. So again, we just have to be prepared to do that. Not only does PJM provide their forecast, but we do it as well, in a sense, from our IRP, our Integrated Resource Plan that we put out every few years. And again, it's based on what our belief is by providing that all-of-the-above approach or that mixed bag of generation sources that we can put online and put into play to handle that demand. It is based on what information we know of currently, looking into the future. So it's not necessarily a definitive plan by any means, but it's really just given us an ability to, to project what we see as far as what we need to build out from a generation standpoint. You'll see from last year's numbers, percentage-wise, as far as what it was in our mix, with natural gas being on the top end there. Projection-wise, it would, it would ramp down with the other areas becoming more prevalent, like our renewable space with wind and hydro and solar and such. So I will call out one thing in particular, though. You know, the VCA and the Virginia Clean Economy Act, the legislation does mandate us to put a lot of these renewables online by 2035 in the sense of solar, battery storage, wind. However, it does not sacrifice reliability. So there is a caveat in there that actually allows us to look at it from a lot, more so at the end of the day, from a reliability standpoint. If we get to 2039, 2040, and we still need the generation online to handle the load demand, while we're continuously building others, you know, we're not going to shut down a Clover Power Station or some other form in order to make that happen. We cannot sacrifice reliability to do that. But again, we're trying to balance this, again, from this mixed bag in order to, that's a, you know, help to us, it's helped to our customer base by having the different forms of generation. I make, I threw this up here just to kind of give you an idea. What it is, is the snapshot of that week back in January that we talked about, that, where we set the all-time load demand. You'll see that more so on the right side on the 23rd, but really what it's, just want to give everybody a, a good idea of what we look at from our, how these different sources of generations play against the demand that's on the system at that time. You'll see nuclear at the bottom, it's steady. You know, nuclear is, when it's on, it's on, and it's providing power to the grid with what we got. Natural gas and others are more dispatchable in the sense that we can ramp them up and down as needed, depending on what's needed that, that particular time, and, and other sources. The particular day, the morning of the 23rd, you'll see that at its peak, which is in the morning time, so you're thinking six, seven o'clock, people are getting up, turning their heat up, turning the businesses on, getting ready, everything's going. At peak demand time, you know, solar, for instance, because that is a question we get a lot as far as how that plays into the mix. Solar may not have been directly adding into the demand at that time as far as putting a generation on, being first thing in the morning. But as you can see it ramping down, you see in the blue, the solar actually coming back into play and allowing us to ramp down in other forms, such as natural gas. And even the hydro, which is in purple, that's us actually ramping down, ramping up and then down, of course, our Bath County Pump Storage Facility, which is a very unique facility. If you haven't seen it, by the way, you can go, go online to our website, just type in Bath County. It's a pumped hydro facility, it's very unique, and it provides a tremendous benefit to our system when we need it as well. But I, I encourage you to look at that if you haven't. It's, it's, it's a lot of good information there. So what are we doing now to address that? So we're, a lot of different areas, we've talked about, hit on these already, but from renewable and energy storage space, again, continuing to build out our portfolio of solar projects. Battery storage is another piece, and I know that, you know, that, that interest is growing as well. I mean, we're happy to answer any questions about that too, because I know that's something we may not have talked about here locally as much either. So that's definitely in the mix. Our offshore wind project off the coast of Virginia Beach is about 60% complete at this point in time, should be online later in '26. And at full out peak, once that, if that's generating at full out peak, it's 660,000 customers worth of power that it's generating and putting onto the grid. So very important as far as what it can bring online. Nuclear, again, you know, you've probably heard us talk about SMRs, the Small Modular Reactor Technology that we're looking at. We announced our first project that we want to develop here in Louisa County, right next to our North Annas Power Station. So that's very exciting for us, as long as extending the licenses that we have at North Ann and Surrey. As you could see in that previous graphic, having that baseload power from our nuclear stations is very important. And of course, natural gas, we're still developing what we can in that area too, because we realize the importance that it has as well. There's two stations I know not far from here, and I know there formerly was more here as well. So it's, it's a, definitely a technology that we're continuing to, to keep as an important piece of our portfolio. So a couple more slides, and then I'll talk about some more specific Mecklenburg-related items, but just want to give everybody, I know sometimes we get questions about rates as far as how things are charged and how it's working out. If you look at it just in really these three specific buckets, you, you have a base rate, you have riders that are included with that based on specific investments we have in different infrastructure and projects that we're building out, and of course, a fuel factor that covers, you know, what it costs to run, you know, run our natural gas or coal nuclear stations. Of course, the renewables benefit us in that particular sense and, and the fact that they don't have the fuel costs related to it. But in general, those are really what goes into our rates. This past March, we actually provided, excuse me, we petitioned SCC to approve our, during a biennial review of rate case, first time we've actually asked for approval of a, of base rates to be increased since 1992. This does cover a wide variety of reasons for that. You know, you're, it reflects all those increasing costs that we see across the board. It's not just the energy space, but we see those increases well from the infrastructure build-out that we have to, to invest in, the equipment, but also, you know, other things to make sure the reliability, reliability is still in play. And of course, the fuel factor part of that is another piece of our request to the state. That is something that we actually, as you can see the date on there is July, that's something that we can, in an interim basis, can, can actually bring into play, and it can be adjusted as necessary, you know, as, as it goes on. SCC should be ruling on our, the biennial rate case this fall. So they'll have public hearings and, and, and come with their determination later this So here in Mecklenburg, just a quick graphic to kind of show you in general in green, that's our coverage territory, service territory here in the county, obviously intertwined with co-ops. And we have a local office in South Hill where the little star is there. I don't think I need to describe where South Hill is, I think you're all aware. So that office in particular, I, I'd just like to call out in the sense that they do a tremendous job and work within not only Mecklenburg, but some of the other surrounding counties. And they do that with a staff of roughly 20 people. They do, that's a tremendous, tremendous job that they do, and I owe them a lot of credit. Definitely one of our smaller offices, too. Just here locally, since the la, over the last two years, as a part of our, what we do in the community and trying to offer support, billing assistance is one thing that can happen through our energy share program. Over the last two years, we've actually provided over $105,000 in billing assistance to 260-plus families here in Mecklenburg County, which were, that's a great program, and we're, that's something that is a definite benefit to our customers when they're in need. And lastly, I just want to bring up what specifically project-wise is going on on the left side. You know, I, I know it's a, a very zoomed-out graphic, but the transmission work that's ongoing to largely support what we're, what is going on here from the data center side. We have quite a few projects that are in the early phases of construction. There, the Nebula Range Project is still, we're being under review by the state, so it's pending their approval as we speak. And that's the line basically from, between Boynton and South Hill. Our rural broadband program, which is providing that middle mile support, the main line runs to help support that build-out across the county, is nearly complete. As I understand, there's two Microsoft properties we're actually working on right now, and once that's done, we'll be complete with our portion of the rural broadband program here in the county. And of course, Finneywood, that is the one project we have in, in the queues far as from our, from a solar side. And it's a project that, again, going back to what I was stating earlier, that anytime we're approaching, whether it's a solar project, whether it's battery storage, whether it's building out a nuclear or a natural gas station, all of these play an important role in how we're able to mix those generation sources. They keep, they help us stay reliable, even though they are, at times, you know, we all always know that not everything works, you know, in the same sense. You know, you have baseload power, dispatchable power, and those that operate at certain times, whether the wind's blowing or the sun's shining. But they all play an increasingly important part in being, allowing us the opportunity to put reliable power on the grid. So more to come on that, but I'm happy to, to answer any questions, but I really just wanted to, again, thank y'all for letting us give, I know that's a quick overview. We could talk a lot more and by all means, ask questions. But at the end of the day, it's, it's really about us. What we're doing is we're trying to continue to, to build out and meet that record demand that we see. It's here, it's coming, and we're doing everything we can to, to make that happen. We believe in the local process and being able to work through our localities to do that. It's not all on one area to, to handle it, but we see the value in working locally in order to do what we can to meet that demand. So appreciate you all letting us be here. Open for any questions.
Absolutely. Anyone have any questions for Justin? You know I do.
I know you do.
I've got one. I've got a question as far as you were saying on the, the, when y'all bill, the, the rider incentive, I guess, cost sharing rider.
Question of the rates, yeah.
I, I think, I don't know if y'all do it every quarter or every month, I can't remember, but, and a question, why do y'all only have rider policies on renewables and not SMRs or natural gas?
So there, there are riders that come into play for the other generation sources, too. Yeah, like for instance, you know, anytime we have, like, the LNG storage facility that we're building currently to store backup fuel for Brunswick and Greasible Power Stations, those will go into a, a rider, a different, it's obviously called something different, they name them differently, but it, but it, it does go into that as well, yeah.
I do like the transparency, because I think, you know, people do like to see where their money was going.
That's right, yeah. That's right. And but, you know, at the end of the day, too, I mean, I probably should have said this earlier, I mean, I, I too have to pay that Dominion bill, you know? They, they don't let us slide by any means. So yeah, it is important. You want to know what you pay for. No one likes seeing anything go up, but I think we can all agree is the world we're living in today is everything's going up. And we're trying to manage that, and from a rate standpoint, we are still doing that in this, in the area of which we fall under, which is still being below national average on rates. So that's important to us, and it's still going up, but we're still trying to maintain that, that impact to the customers, too.
Sounds good. Thank you so much.
Yep.
Notice one of the slides up there, you, you had, up there from like today to 2039, that the natural gas and nuclear percentage is going down, of course, renewable going. Is that being driven mostly by government regulations, or is that a more efficient cost savings by going in that direction?
Yeah, we, we, it's definitely a mix. So this, those are our projections, our forecasts, and what that is, is us looking at, you know, percentage-wise, the more, because we have a lower amount of renewables than what we plan to have in the future that are online today. That number is going to continue to grow, which makes the percentage of nuclear or natural gas, for instance, go down. We're not eliminating those by any means, it's just changing the numbers percentage-wise. Now, coal, for instance, I mean, that's a part of what we are looking at from, you know, any mandates that we get from the state in order to, you know, more or less be clean and what the energy we provide. You know, again, that's, those are, those are things that we're putting in place in order to meet not, you know, the demand, but also some of the mandates that we see across the board, more so from the state level, yeah.
So is it renewables driving costs down?
So renewables are, I mean, if you compare to, it to the other forms of generation, the cost of solar, for instance, would be less than what you would see from building out a, a new commercial-operated, you know, nuclear facility or natural gas station. So those comparisons are made, you know, and, and thus, you know, across the board, that's how we kind of plan out, while also trying to lessen, what I was saying earlier, that impact to the customers and keeping at mixed bag of generation, so to speak, so we're not relying on one source. And at some point in time, you know, the cost of natural gas could spike, and that, you know, obviously, that's an impact that, that, that would be felt across the board. And so, you know, again, it's all a balance, really.
Yeah. Thank you, Ken. Dennis?
What, what if anything were you guys able to do to get the most production that you can get from whether it's solar or hydro, or, 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 otherwise, the existing things that we already have? Can you speak to that?
Yeah, some of what we're doing right now is, you know, the, the trans, some of the transmission and substation work we're doing now are just upgrades to the existing system. You know, it's not necessarily a requirement to build more. Obviously, we are, but some of what we have now, we can actually, we can upgrade, we can put in new equipment as that technology becomes available to do that. And we are doing that now. Where you can look at from the, you know, Strategic Underground Program, we've undergrounded more than 1,900 miles of, of overhead distribution lines that tend to be out, in outage-prone areas in order to lessen the outages. that tend to be in outage-prone areas in order to lessen the outages. And so that's been very helpful. There's cybersecurity and software upgrades that we go through to strengthen that, the grid, so to speak, and the, and all the infrastructure that's on it. So there's a lot of things going on behind the scenes as well, to your point, to upgrade what we have now. So it's not all brand-new from start to finish, yeah.
So to expand upon the questions, more specifically, are, what if anything are you guys able to do? Say, for example, with solar, if the provider came in and advocated that they were going to provide X amount of energy from that facility, but then we get reports that it's much less than what they had said they were going to do? Are you able to advocate repairs or upgrades, you know, to those kind of folks? Or if you look at hydro, is, are you, are you guys able to have any influence on running the turbines more often than they are, or any of those kind of things?
Yeah, well, I will say from a solar perspective, Eric or Gary, you want to call it? Just to really touch on, I think what you're asking too was from a solar perspective and what we can do to.
We've got people that are reporting that we have equipment.
That's right.
That is not producing.
Yeah, 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 and what we're doing to make that more efficient. Yeah, yeah, so that's, I was going to just ask.
And hello, everybody. Eric Fritz, Mandrake Business Development at Dominion. Yeah, for our solar projects, we're, you know, we're continuing, our O and M team is continuously looking at what issues we're having on particular equipment, looking and analyzing. Are there opportunities to either replace equipment or better maintain them or better operate them? They're going through exercises to look at, is there better optimization of the existing equipment we have? So it's something that our O and M team is continuing to do. And I know we've heard a lot, I know there's a project in the county, not our project, that's in the area that's been talked about a lot, about having panels that are out of alignment. Those are things that we're constantly look at and our O and team, O and M team is looking to ensure that they're, have that uptime, that operational time as high as possible. Some of the technologies are new, you know, solar hasn't been around that long. So there's little kind of bugs that happen that we're going to continue to evaluate early on in these projects. But that's somewhat our focus because we've got a commitment for our fleet to provide as much energy as we can. So if we're not providing that energy, that's less megawatts that our customers are not getting. And that's an obligation that we have to our customers through the State Corporation Commission. So we're, there's a lot of things on solar that we're always looking at, but we're constantly looking at what's going wrong, what equipment we can replace, what equipment we can repair in a different way, how we can optimize the software, how we can optimize the different components, pieces and parts. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Awesome, thank you.
So how long do you think it would, to take, to acquire the proficiency of solar panels to the states that we are now?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
How long do you think it would take to acquire the proficiency of the solar panels operation to where we are now? The total panels that I think the Yogi had talking about the different directions and so forth that they're in, and they're not proficiently operating as to what you need to acquire sufficient energy? So how long is it going to take to correct this matter?
I mean, on a lot of our projects, we are, we've seen improvements in, in the performance of after the first couple of years. And then we may, we may run into other issues, just like any other power plant. You know, we have maintenance issues we run into on our gas plants, our nuclear plants, our power plants. They've got to be fixed. A lot of stuff may not even be visible. But, you know, we're, we're continuing to work on that. I know that we're working and the S E C has a keen eye on making sure that we're getting to the most efficient. I think it's on a, really on a case-by-case basis, on a project-by-project, because we do have equipment that's different in a lot of our projects. So we have some, we may have equipment X or manufacturer X on one project and manufacturer X on another. And those issues may be different. So it's kind of hard to pin down, you know, when one issue may be resolved on one project versus one issue that we are running. But I, what I can say is our O and M team is, you know, continuing to work on with a focus of getting, you know, our performance to the maximum of what we, we need to be and what we predicted to be when we put these projects through as quickly as possible to get those megawatts. So I can't really say I can pin down specifically when issues on specific projects will be remedied, but that's the focus of our O and M team because those megawatts are precious to our customers to make sure we're getting the maximum out of our projects.
Y'all doing a lot of research and development on like wasted, like I guess what you'd call wasted space? Like putting the solar panels and stuff on over top of parking lots or landfills, capped landfills or, you know, sometimes when they strip mine coal and they have those mine reclamation projects going on, it's really like a dead space. Brown sites where industries have come in and there's really no future for that area. Y'all doing a lot of R and D on that?
Yeah, so we're, we're working on a couple of projects actively. And there's also a point out in the Virginia Clean Economy Act, there's a carve-out that says, I think it's 200 megawatts has to be of that 16,000 that are required by 2035. 200 megawatts have to be on what they call brownfield or previously developed sites. So we've got to focus on developing those kind of sites. We've got our first landfill project, our Ivy landfill project up in Albemarle, that I believe is going to construction soon. We've got a project out in the borders of Wise and Dickinson County that's on a former reclaimed strip mine that we're working through development on in partnership with the Nature Conservancy. And then we're looking for other opportunities where those brownfield sites. So those will be kind of our first. They are more expensive just because you're building on stuff that's harder to build on, whether it's landfills or, you know, on strip mines where you have geological concerns. But we're hoping these are the springboard to help drive those costs down and make those a more efficient application for solar.
Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, I always have something there.
Yeah, I got something. I guess, Justin, the takeaway, especially for our constituents, you know, is the concern generation and that kind of thing. But what I took out of that was that generation reliability will never be compromised for green mandates. Am I correct on that?
Yeah, I mean, the bottom line is because we have that obligation to serve the demand, we have to make sure we do that. So the generation we have online today is something that's going to be vitally important until we know that we can make any of those changes that are, that get carved out in a mandate or any future planning, for instance. So, yeah, I mean, we, that's, we, at the end of the day, we have to put the megawatts on the grid. And that's, that's the most important.
I hope y'all are two steps ahead of the demand, maybe five.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, and that's what, you know, we, it's a, we're proud in the sense that we were able to handle those days that we had up there earlier that showed where we had them. Not only from what we generate, we do purchase power as well. But it's, you know, there's other instances across the country where that doesn't always happen. So because we're in such an area with that high demand, not only today, but what's coming, that's the reason why we have to keep pursuing those opportunities and those different forms of generation. You know, at the end of the day, you know, safety is our number one thing across the company. It's a core value and something that we, you know, obviously want to translate into our communities as well. But we can't ever waver on the ideas of reliability, you know, sustainability and affordability either. So it's all part of it.
Y'all, I'm sure you've probably got some pretty elaborate formulas to predict future usage and staying on top of that.
And they don't let me calculate those. They don't let me use those formulas either.
Don't bring them here.
Maybe Eric, but yeah.
Don't bring them here. I don't think we'd understand them. But anyway, long as it's working, that's all we care about.
Yeah, that's right.
So anyway, that's what, that's what people want to hear about. Good job.
I understand. No, thank you all.
Alex?
Yeah, I've got two questions while you're standing here. Number one, can you elaborate a little bit further on the new high-energy user rate categories? It was briefly in the presentation, but can you describe that a little bit more and what, how that works?
And I apologize, I should have mentioned that already. So as a part of what, through our rate review with the, with the State Corporation Commission, this biannual rate case, within that, we are asking for approval of a new rate class. For instance, for data centers. So that would more so shift some of the cost to those who are the higher-energy users, for instance. So it's not just a evenly cost that gets spread out. It's basically, you know, carving out what we all know. You know, if you're a high-energy user, you know, you pay for it based on where you fall within those classes. So yeah, hopefully we, you know, that's, that's an approval that we get as well across the board with the rest of it.
And following up on this, this wasn't my two, but now I'm adding another one. Following up on that question, so when a high-energy user comes in currently and they need a substation or some other infrastructure improvement, who currently pays for that?
Yeah, actually, I tell you what, I can do you one better, maybe give you a little more info on that. Dominic, do you want to?
I told you I brought some people today.
It's always easy to delegate. That's good. We don't want them sitting doing nothing.
Good morning. I'm Dominic Minor. So my group works directly with the data center, so we're getting a lot of these types of questions. So today, those assets would roll into the rate base. And so that's part of the reason why we're creating this separate rate class to show that the data center is paying their portion for the infrastructure that they're driving.
I think that is another one of the great concerns that a lot of your constituents have brought up in the past. The other question that I had in general, speaking a lot of reliability, I can give you one example of a line that is not very reliable, and that's the one we're currently situated on. We have had numerous amount of power outages in the last, inordinate a number of power outages in the last year. And so I would definitely request your attention to that and see what we can do to upgrade our lines here because we seem to be on the worst one.
Yeah, we do, we do have areas where you do have the, more or less you're relying on one circuit, right? And you don't have that loop scheme capability to bring in power from another area in the case of an outage or, for instance, last week when you had, we're out for a couple hours. You know, a tree came over the line, you know, at some point down the circuit. So between, you know, at the end of the day, that, that is a case that we look at not only based on how outage-prone it is, but also weighing the cost to make that upgrade too. We're constantly looking at it, so don't think we're not. You know, we are, I actually spoke with someone last week after that event in asking about that because I've, you know, I've even spoken in other areas to similar questions, right? So at some point in time, I will, you will be the first to know as soon as we can come up with a, with a solution. But again, it really breaks down to the, the cost that goes into it and making sure we're being diligent enough about it. Obviously, I know there's a cost of business too, right? You know, you want everybody to be able to be here. This time of year, you want the AC running as well. So we're definitely looking at it. It's, it's not a, it's not a case where it's a forgotten situation by any means.
Just remember, you know, what we do here.
I got it, I got it, I got it. I understand, I understand, yeah.
Lights and computers.
That's right.
I think one of the things I had, Mr. Chairman, was, one of the things that y'all did point out that we've had questions about is not all of the current solar projects in Mecklenburg are owned by Dominion. So therefore, the one that's problematic may not be your facility. So I think people need to understand that too, that not all of them are y'all's just because you sell the power here, they're not all y'all's. But also on the distribution side, we always have all of these projects that you showed the map for. Can you give a little bit of background on how y'all advertise those projects? Because we hear from a lot of constituents that we didn't know anything about it. So can you just take a minute and just elaborate how y'all do try to get those projects out there?
Yeah, as far as, so in the case, let's just say we have a project.
Like the Nebula Range.
Yeah, right, that we're looking at, you know, transmission. Yeah, so in that case, yeah, our transmission, which I actually have Janay here from our transmission group. I told you. So either way, at the end of the day, we obviously have to host public meetings, open houses in order to go over those, those projects and what's coming. And actually, Janay's team on the electric transmission communication side of the house coordinates those meetings. Usually it's multiple meetings, not only to provide information on what the project is. And at that point in time, there's, there are options as far as what we're looking at as potential, you know, routing and such, you know, pending S E C approval. So it's, yeah, it's typically tied into multiple meetings. At the end of the day, the S E C is the one that chooses how it works. But by all means, I will always say this, I mean, you can't over-communicate anything. So if there's ever a time for us to talk more, you know, we'll do it. Or, you know, if we haven't done it, we will do it, you know? And that's, you know, that's absolutely the case.
And I think that's just been the biggest thing we've heard is communications about all the projects and stuff like that. What's going on, why they're doing it, you know, all that type of stuff.
And I won't stand here today either and say that we've done, you know, everything 100%. You know, our station, you know, we can have an outage on a line, you know? We can, you know, have maintenance on a generation site. We can have a situation where we could have talked more about something that was coming. So we're not perfect by any means, but I, I think that with what we do and what we're tasked to do, it's, it's, it's very important and, and we're going to continue to approve and make sure we're reliable too.
Well, thank you. And what Alex and Justin have been hitting you up on, I agree. If you're looking for some underground projects, I think we've got some great ones right here that would be great additions to it. But we definitely need ours to be able to operate here also.
Just for my concern, before we, before you sit down and we sit you down. Do you, do you guys have or still have devices on individual homes for peak times like what we have right now?
Yeah. As far as, you know, regulating like your energy usage and your, you know, there's smart cooling programs and things like that, yeah, we do have those. So and it's all on our website too. And I mentioned Energy Share, which is a big customer assistance program that we have as far as billing assistance to those in need. But also what they do is they provide free weatherization and energy audits as well. That's a benefit to the customers too. So that's an opportunity to not only, you know, maybe change your habits, but also improve what you have at home as far, you know, it could be windows, doors and other things, you know? So, yeah.
I got one more I'm done with. Is it more cost-effective, I don't know, we might have talked about this. Is it more cost-effective in the future if you have a decent-sized data center like a campus? Would it be more cost-effective to build like a, like a S M R beside it instead of running all these transmission lines everywhere?
Eric?
He said, I'm not answering this one.
So Eric is not only versed in the solar space, but he's also an S M R guy as well, so.
My real expertise comes in, I'm a nuclear engineer by degree, very proudly. But I believe the question is, we look at like citing S M Rs near kind of data center growth or big load growth. You know, we're going to look, and really for all generation, we're going to look at where kind of all the attributes come together for that particular type of generation that's needed from a citing perspective. So like for S M Rs, it's a lot of the typical things we're looking at, which would be like, got to have good flatland, free wetlands, free of environmental interferences. But there's also some particularly special things about S M Rs around like geological, because you got to have big foundations and things like that, so you got to look at geology. You got to look at surrounding hazards. So like you can't kind of put an S M R maybe next to things like a big chemical plant. So there's some other factors we look at. We're going to, you know, we're focused on North Anna right now. We're going to, if we decide to move forward, you know, definitively with S M Rs, we'll open up and we're, you know, we've got in our I R P additional sites. It's not a definitive, you know, a commitment to build those. But we would go through a sighting effort. We wouldn't necessarily look at initially co-locating, but we may look at the best sites and they might happen to be because there's transmission lines nearby and there's a lot of load that a site that's good for an S M R might be right next door to a data center. But like right now, you know, we're not, we're continuing to look at potential future sites. We're big focus right now is on North Anna. But I think for right now, we're kind of focused on what's going to be the best sites for, for an S M R that's going to meet those kind of particular quality.
Okay, anyone else? Justin, greatly appreciate the update.
Thank you, sir.
Did a great job. Thank you. Mr. Wilkinson, property committee?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Meeting with the property committee held in for the county in Mecklenburg on July 14th, 2025 at 8:00 a.m. and the board supervisors meeting room of the Goode Bank Building. The meeting was called to order by Chairman Wilkinson. Members present, myself, Chair Andy Hallgrove, David Frankly, Claudia Lundey, Dennis Spence. Also present, Jim. Also present, Jim Jennings, Tom Tanner, Alex Gosschar, Judy Sheffield, Jenny Whitmore, Gina Moll. Closed session pursuant to section 2.2-3711.a. .3 period of the Code of Virginia. Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property. Upon a motion of Mr. Spence, the board voted unanimously to approve closed session pursuant to section 2.2-3711.a. .3 of the Code of Virginia. Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or the disposition of publicly held real property. Where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body. Sterling Wilkinson, Claudia Lundey, David Brinkley, Andy Hallgrove, Dennis Spence voted aye. Open session. Upon a motion of Ms. Lundey, the board voted unanimously to reconvene in open sessions. Sterling Wilkinson, Claudia Lundey, David Brinkley, Andy Hallgrove, Dennis Spence voted aye. Adopt certification resolution. Upon a motion of Mr. Hallgrove, the board voted unanimously to approve certification resolution. Sterling Wilkinson, Claudia Lundey, David Brinkley, Andy Hallgrove, Dennis Spence voted aye. Certification of closed session. Whereas the Mecklenburg County Board of Supervisors convened a closed session on this date pursuant to an aff, to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provision of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia requires certification by the Mecklenburg County Board of Supervisors that such closed session was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore be resolved that Mecklenburg County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed session to which this certification resolution applies. And only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed session were heard, discussed, or considered by the Mecklenburg County Board of Supervisors. Upon a motion of Mr. Brinkley, the committee voted unanimously to authorize the board chairman or the county administrator to exercise the county's rights to extend an option contract on property located in the eastern portion of Mecklenburg County. And I'd like to pause right here, Mr. Chairman, make this in form of a motion to the full board.
Okay, everyone's heard the motion. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, the motion carries.
There being no further business, the meeting was adjourned.
Okay. Mr. Hallgrove, budget and finance?
The meeting of the budget and finance committee was, was held in the end and for the county of Mecklenburg on July 14th, 2025 at 8:30 AM in the board supervisor's meeting room, Goode Building. Called to order was myself, Chair Person, David Brinkley, Sterling Wilkinson, Tom Tanner, and Bernard Blackwell. Also, Jim Jennings, Claudia Lundey, Kirk Rabbit, Dennis Spence, Marsha Siemens, Alex Gosschar, Judith Sheffield, Jenny Whitmore, Brian Dalton, and Amber Barber. Mr. Gosschar advised the Mecklenburg County Public Schools operate on a cash basis accounting method. Therefore, any year-end transfer or supplemental appropriations must be made immediately after the conclusion of the fiscal year. The school board affirmed that the MCPS year-end financial request as, at its June 16th and June 25th, 25th meeting and budget and finance committee board of supervisors must act to confirm or deny the MCPS adjustments at the July meeting. Mr. Gosschar reviewed the following requests. Request one, transfer in fund number 241 from category instruction to category transportation, Request number two, supplemental appropriation from the Commonwealth in fund number 241 for category operations and maintenance, $2,607,894.2. Request number three, supplemental appropriation from the federal government in fund 241 for category federal projects, $2,475,226.7. Request number four, supplemental appropriation in fund 242 from external sources, $258,136.32. Supplemental appropriation in fund 242 from fund balance is $9,898.25. Pursuant to the provisions of 15.2-2507A of the Code of Virginia, A, any locality, any, may amend this budget to adjust the aggregate amount to be appropriated during the current fiscal year as shown in the currently adopted budget as prescribed by 15.2-2504. However, any such amendments which exceed 1% of the total expenditure shown in the current adopted budget must be accomplished by publishing notice of a meeting and public hearing in accordance to 15.2-1427. The public hearing was, was open. There was no public input. The public hearing was closed. Upon a motion, Mr. Tanner committed, the committee voted unanimously to recommend approval of the reference year, referred year and transfers of supplemental appropriation to Mecklenburg County Public School. I would like to stop there, Mr. Chairman, to make it an emotion that we received the five recommendation request for the county appropriations.
Okay, we need to open public hearing first. We'll now open the public hearing for the fiscal year 2024, 2025 budget amendments. Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing no one, we will close the public hearing and vote on Mr. Hallgrove's motion. Everyone's heard the motion. Any, any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, the motion carries.
Next, Chair, whom and I advise that on June 25th, 2025, the Mecklenburg County Board approved a proposal to convert the wrestling room in the Mecklenburg County High Middle School into a expanded band room. During the construction of the school facility, the design of the band room was less than the size needed based on the current interest in the band program. As a result, the band program is currently unable to allow for enough space to suitably practice. The school does have a dedicated wrestling room, which the Mecklenburg County Public School purposes to convert into a band space. If approved, the wrestling program would be shifted from this room and allow the use of the school's available gym for practices. The total estimated cost of this work is $195,000, which $145,000 is for the space conversion and $50,000 for the appropriate acoustical panels. A copy of the scope work is included as amendment B. Approved of the work now, we'll allow the project to proceed while the school remains in out-of-session. Sufficient fund balance is available to support the cost of this project. Upon a motion of Mr. Wilkinson, the committee voted unanimously to recommend approval that the $195,000 is hereby appropriated with review from the fund balance estimate according to the fiscal year 2025, 26 budget of the school capital fund, fund number 108 for conversion of the wrestling room of the expanded band room. I will stop here and like to make this a motion that we received for the request of $195,000 for the expansion from the wrestling room until the expansion of the musical band room.
Okay, everyone's heard the motion. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Opposed, the motion carries.
No further benefit, the meeting was adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Hallgrove. We now have public comment. Anyone wishing to speak? Alex?
Both people who signed up, signed up to speak on the earlier special exemption permit application.
Okay, so no one in regular?
No.
Okay, very good. You still have the floor here.
All right, so we have one item in particular that we got to look at here in the county administrators report. Five years ago, this board adopted an ordinance that created a Mecklenburg County Lake Advisory Committee. The purpose of that committee was to adjudicate any requests that were brought forward by citizens regarding no wake buoys in the lakes of Mecklenburg County. In 2020, that committee met several times and acted on a few applications. And since then, has remained completely dormant. There have been no meetings, no applications of any kind in the last five years. Recently, there was a couple citizens who expressed some interest. And in the review of the enabling legislation, we found that the ordinance that enacted the committee created a, a committee of eight individuals. And it set out that the county administrator, the zoning administrator were on there and either a planning commission member or a board member from all the districts that at that time touched the lakes. Well, we've had a, a redistricting in the time since that happened. So all the districts listed out in that ordinance no longer touch the lakes. And so we're going to have to amend that ordinance. We should have amended that ordinance when the districts went into effect, but that did not occur. So we're going to have to do that now. While that opportunity is in front of us, I just thought it was important for the board to contemplate the structure and organization of this committee and determine whether it's still warranted. Do you still want a committee to exist? Or would you prefer this to be evaluated by staff or potentially a committee that's made up of non-board members? That's, deals with the review process that evaluates the submission from the Department of Wildlife Resources and submits a recommendation and brings it to the board. Because ultimately, the board of supervisors is going to have to act on it. So is there value of just waiting until the end of the process? If you do want board members to be on there, do you need potentially up to six board members? Or could it be scaled back to potentially, you know, one per lake or something to that effect? Do you want planning commission members on there? If there are citizens that are selected to participate in this, do you want any qualifications for those citizens? Do they need to live in a certain area, have certain past occup, or present occupations? The two staff members that are currently on this committee, are they voting members or are they non-voting members? They're just there in their official capacity? That was not determined in the original enabling ordinance. Nor was any membership terms, nor was the, how a chair was selected or any other officers. So there's some structural needs for that ordinance as we go to amend it. So I wanted to bring that to your attention today. No decision has to be rendered. You can think about it and come back next month with your thoughts if you so choose. But that is something as we go to advertise and draft a new ordinance, would like you to contemplate. Do you still want to have a lake advisory commission, or a committee, I should say, that you all, or the vast majority of you serve on?
Okay. You know, the only thing I would say is that, you know, I think five or six years, six, seven years ago, we had an issue to come up, a couple, and we discussed that. And all the years before that and after that, we have done nothing. So is it really a need for it? I mean, be my question, you know, if it's been dormant, laying here dormant five years, we've not had a meeting or anything on it. And if an issue comes up, since most of us are on it, anyhow, we can discuss it then.
Yeah, can, can it just be addressed if it does come up?
Yeah.
The proper way to address it, does it go through the planning commission? Does it come through us directly?
So that is also a choice that you could have. You could send it to the planning commission for review first. That is a legislative choice that the board of supervisors has the power to direct where it would go. Under the current situation, it would come to the, it ultimately has to come to the board. Right now, it would go to this committee and then from this committee up to the board. If this committee was eliminated, it would just go straight to the board. But staff is still going to work on it beforehand. If we get a request, we are going to refer it to DWR. And DWR does its staff work and provides it back to us. So it won't, you won't be acting blind without anybody having touched it.
Yeah, and I think a little backstory on this too. Back when this came up, there was a section, I believe it's Smith Creek, it's a creek over on the south side of the lake. And it's the only section that both sides of it are in Mecklenburg County. The backing end is in North Carolina. The two sides were both in Mecklenburg. Because if you usually like pop the creek on Lake Estes down there, you got Mecklenburg on one side, Brunswick on the other side, and Warren County on the south side. And that topic came up about putting no wake buoys in that. And we were like, hold on, wait a minute. If you're going to do it, all three counties got to agree, not just that one entity. So as far as I'm concerned, we can bring it back next month. But I think that I don't see why the committee would have to stand if we're going to bring it to the full board for.
I, I think, the way I think, I don't think rightfully I hear about this, but I, I think one thing too that, that, that's, that should be most involved is the wildlife conservatives who, who worked at, and work in that area. Because they, they have the more experience, they're more knowledgeable, they're more aware, that's their, their job. And to be on, on, to be in, who's with the planning boards so that they can bring whatever need for problems, for meetings that they need to, to have. And then once that's been discussed, then bring it for the board of supervisors. And then we'll, we'll go from there.
If it gets to that point.
Yeah, if it gets to that. Because wildlife services is there all the time.
Do you want me to make a motion that we dissolve this committee and we move forward with it going?
We would have to advertise an ordinance to repeal the ordinance that we enacted five years ago.
Handle that and we'll take care of it next month. Is that agreeable with the board?
It works for me.
I mean, I don't see a need for continuing to commit. If it hadn't met in five years, I think we could handle it as a board.
I agree.
Okay, handle that.
The next item we have is the staff reports. I did want to point out that VDOT was unable to join us today. We did, Jenny and I did meet with the new residency administrator. And he had a, he had double committed himself for this meeting. So they will resume their presence in our meetings next month. But I did want to report that we have met the new residency administrator. He's reached out to us. We've had a conversation. And so they are not slighting or snubbing you today by not having seen.
Is he taking Kevin's place?
So Kevin is the assistant residency. He took Tommy's place.
Okay.
So Kevin remains in his current position.
I don't know if everybody knew, but Ki- Kevin moved here last month because he lost his mother. Suddenly, I see.
Yeah. Okay. Not all you have, Alex?
Yes, that's all I have.
Okay. So we got a consent calendar we got to approve?
Oh, yes.
All right, everyone's heard, heard the motion to approve the consent calendar. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, the motion carries. Ford Mama Mous, Mr. Wilkinson, you want to go?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to have a couple things. Mr. Lane with Soil and Water Avery, you know, gave his presentation. I don't think people realize that the amount of work that goes into, how pivotal it is to this area. And like many of our other departments, I think our workload is outrun our workforce, overgrown our workforce. And it's pretty obvious here, he's a huge asset to this, to this county. I mean, he's not directly involved with us, but he really, his work affects a lot of people within it. And we should do all that we can, in my opinion, you know, to supplement or help out whatever they need. I'll go ahead and say that. The last thing I have, you know, we see on the news about the horrific, you know, flooding in Texas and just, you know, mind-blowing what happened out there. You know, we have several large dams in our area. And, and I don't know if this is the correct time to bring this up. I know we've got emergency service meeting coming up. But, you know, what are the protocols if we were to have a historic dam failure, say John H. Carr Dam? I mean, you know, you, you don't want to think that could ever happen, but they didn't think that was going to happen out there. So I think we need to visit that and just, you know, see what routes we need to go forward, maybe tighten that up a bit. I'm sure there are some guidelines, but that's something that we should discuss. That's all that I have.
Thank you, Mr. Tanner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, congratulations to Ms. Callahan on her 100th. I mean, that's just amazing to think how times have changed from her childhood to man electrification and computers and everything else since then. But absolutely, congratulations to her. And reading through our board packet also, I wanted to point out the EMS award that our Mecklenburg Emergency Services earned from the American Heart Association. It's the Silver Recognition Award. It said it acknowledges our agency's commitment to delivering evidence-based, guideline-driven patient care suffering from STEMS or heart issues. So I just want to commend them on their hard work on that. And also to point out what was in our packet too, that he had in here that as of July the 1st, we're hiring.
as of July the first, we're hiring three new paramedics and as of August first, we're hiring three more new there, paramedics. So, um, this board's commitment to emergency services is absolutely paying off. Um, we're getting good quality people who are going to be here to serve the citizens of this county and I think it's, uh, Justin's leadership has, uh, helped tremendously and also speaking to the sheriff's office too, they've been able to fill positions with certified people, um, so that's saving us money by not having to send them to school and stuff like that. So our investment in emergency services is paying off and, um, just thank all the staff and everybody for all the hard work they do every day for the citizens of the county. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Barbara.
Oh, congrat- congratulations to Mrs. Callahan on her milestone and also to, uh, re- reiterate what Mr. Tanner was saying, uh, the board's commitment to investing in the services of this county is really reaping benefits with staff and providing those services. It was a good thing.
Ms. London?
Yes, thank you. Again, congratulations to Mrs. Callahan on her one hundredth, uh, birthday. She looks very well, um, looking more than in her nineties. Uh, we are having a lot of groundbreaking in the South Hill area of the county. Uh, you've seen Wawa, you've seen another dollar store and there's several other things this river will be cutting, uh, this week in South Hill. One especially is that the old, uh, hospital in South Hill is going to be turned into or has been turned into, um, uh, rehab rehabilitation center and other part of nursing home. That's going to be in the afternoon, the others going to be in the daytime, but we have several. If you want to know what the, uh, you haven't seen them in the paper, just call the Chamber of Commerce and they'll tell you where and when. Also, um, Sterling, I was thinking about the same thing, uh, when I saw the flood in Texas, I said, what if the Currie Dam flooded? I think the emergency team need to look into that, uh, and see what they can do, uh, for the citizens of this county. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Grab.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to piggyback off with what Mr. Wilkinson said about Mr. Lane. I'd, uh, whatever we can do to help him and his, his team, I hope we can do, come up with something. Have we got in contact with anybody, Farm Bureau, to come talk to us about the land use?
No.
It might be something we want.
I mean, I'm, I've talked to him all the time, but, um, I mean, that's just, you know, the last speaker we had at our ag meeting, you know, basically he touched on all of that, so I mean, he, he can come again.
All right, yeah, um, I definitely don't want to miss out on that.
Okay.
Do we have any, another update on Verizon? Nobody?
Uh, to the, to the land use first, we had already planned to have, um, a presentation, um, in the fall. Um, yeah, yeah, so we're gonna, we're also going to have a commissioner of revenue from Powhatan County whi- which has it, um, and uses it as well, so.
Okay, great.
Verizon, uh, very limited interaction with us to date. I will say though, um, at some point, the cell tower that was on, that went through the planning commission, uh, recently for their comprehensive plan review will be in front of you all for a special exemption permit and there will be an attorney who represents Verizon on that matter. That would be a great person to direct any questions in lieu of them not sending their government affairs team.
Okay, don't, please, please, don't let us forget that because, uh...
If you have any questions at this point, send them to me and I will transmit them, uh, to that representative at any point.
So pretty much at this point in time, it's just been just nonexistent from them.
From their government affairs team has been a very limited response.
Right, I feel like it's a pretty big, pretty big deal.
I, I have extended an invitation to them on multiple occasions to come, appear before us, similar to how Dominion appeared today, and I have, um, not gotten any response to that.
Should we just stop like denying, start denying towers?
I don't think you want, I don't think you want to deny towers because that is, that's what you want. You want more towers, but I would say that, that we do have a captive audience with that particular individual and so it's, maybe it's time to direct it in that way rather than to their government affairs team.
Sounds good, too.
Mr. Spencer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to mention, uh, remind people that the upcoming school year, uh, we have a new cell phone policy that will be in place. Uh, I'm, I'm bringing this up because I've gotten phone calls about cell phones, uh, at school and, um, so if you haven't, you probably expect it at some point, but...
Want them or not want them?
Uh, there are citizens who want their children to have the phone. And so, um, you know, I have different opinions about, you know, different parts of it, but I would just, I would just remind citizens that, you know, the children go to school to get an education. Um, I understand their concerns about primarily what I've heard is safety concern. So I, you know, I understand those things, but, but again, um, my takeaway is that the children need to not be distracted and they're going to school to get an education. And so I think this too will pass, but I think especially, uh, for our teenage aged, uh, kids that are in school, this is a big issue, you know, um, much, much of, uh, uh, not just the kids, but these parents that I, that I'm talking to, uh, you know, they, they just find it extremely important that they have that direct contact with their child, uh, especially i- in reference to safety. So I just thought I'd bring that up, uh, and make mention of it. You'll probably hear some more about it as school starts.
That it? Ms. Frank?
Well, I agree with Mr. Spencer. I think, you know, the kids are going to school to get an education. I think they just something with that phone, they need to probably wean it off a little bit, you know, it would probably wouldn't hurt a, hurt a thing and all and, and then back to the soil and water, you know, you know, I know Avery and them, they are overloaded and, and I'm just a little concerned that, you know, we're going, had to wait till a budget and then how long that's going to be because they are, their workload is getting load, heavy and heavy and they are getting falls behind to react to something, to do some, it takes much longer when you've got such a workload and all. Um, the other thing, having Dominion here today, I, I think that's a great thing that we, you know, a couple times a year or something like that when we, to give a little update where we know and we can share with the public, um, you know, VDOT comes in here every month and shares what they're doing, I think that's important. And maybe even Microsoft or big industry like that, maybe once or twice a year could come in and give us a little, you know, a little bit of what's going on, share with the public because we get those questions a lot doing that. And, uh, the only thing else I got, you know, I'm, my birthday's today and I'm planning on being back up here in twenty-nine years and getting my resolution.
Well, it's only as long as in fifty years she could come back and get hers.
I'll be at yours. That's all I got.
All right, Ms. Hargrove?
Thank you. Everybody has said what was on my mind. I don't know whether that's the truth or not, but I am saying. Um, one of the things, uh, what, um, how do, we're, we're talking about dams breaking and we don't ever know when this, this one right here is going to break, but there are many people around the lake area that the insurance won't insure them because they said they are not in a flood zone. So what do we now consider a flood zone? Uh, yes, I mean, they might be on a little bit higher heights, but even those are some higher heights in different areas that the water exceeded. Uh, and so how do we go and convince the insurance that they need to offer insurance around these people that, that's on the lake?
Can I say?
What can we do? Yes, to blow me?
I, I would like to make, make one comment on that. If I'm not mistaken, that just to kind of clarify a little bit, the flooding that happened in Texas was flash flooding on rivers without dams, where here we have a dam that was designed to protect us from flooding. Never saying that something couldn't happen there, but I think we need to reassure the public that, you know, down there it was a different set of circumstances than it was here, but yes, I know what you're saying because now they have a, a flood level on the lake and you don't have to buy flood insurance and it won't, like on Currie Lake, you can't build anything below three twenty because that's in the flood plain, but I just wanted to clarify that.
But we also have a law that says that, uh, what the other places up there at, on the other side of Palmer Spring, that they can't go for so many feet high and so many feet low. And so we have to hold this dam and revert this water to make sure that they, they stay within the guidelines of what has already been matched, that's the law, missed, that's the law. So what, what now in the public needs to be, to have a concern, should we, um, you know, do something to protest about insurance or how will insurance, uh, say that, well, listen, we can't do this in these scenarios, uh, because we are witnessing water now that's, that's unimaginable that, that we've had this year that we haven't witnessed in a long time. So, and, and environment is changing. So these are the things, just to take some concern, uh, because, you know, when you're going home, uh, flood and so forth, I mean, you can just go across the, for a little place where it had a little pipe, used to handle the water, now you have to stop and wait till the water going to end before you go across the road, you know, and this is what we're experiencing there. So I, I, it's just, just a, uh, proof of thought, that's all. And, and then, uh, Mr. Justin sitting in the back, thank you so very much for all that you do. We appreciate you, though I know you don't appreciate me, but I do appreciate you. Thank you, that's all I have.
That's all you have. I don't have much either. I appreciate, uh, Dominion, Justin, y'all, you and your team coming, I think, doing those updates, a great thing. Uh, really do need to stay on this, uh, soil and water conservation thing. Alex, is that, that's not possible to put that together before a budget? I guess that's half going to be in the budget process and again...
We can put it together before the budget if the, uh, board wants to create a new position and authorize that. Um, I just have to emphasize though, that is unlikely that there is going to be a candidate that is going to be available to, to find. That's, that's one item and I also want to point out that Soil and Water District has three approved positions and only two of them are filled. So they do have a third position that at any time they could hire. Now, that position was not designed for the plans review, but it could be designed to do some of the other workload and they, that is a, a possibility that is out there that has not been acted upon since the third person departed the organization. So there, that's another possibility.
I guess that's the best route to take. I know it's not the fastest, but, but nothing goes fast in government anyway. So the best thing is maybe y'all get together with that board, let, mess something out.
Ultimately, ultimately, you're going to want a highly qualified person to be able to do the plans review based on the nature of that work. So, um, there's, there's a lot of demand for that and there's not a lot of supply.
So, so Avery's the only one that can review?
Uh, so there, Avery's the only one in a governmental space that can review. We do have a couple people who work in and around Mecklenburg County that we could divert some work to that have the qualifications, but you'd be essentially buying external services to do that, which is, okay, that's a choice we could make in an interim situation. Um, but there are a couple, uh, I know of at least one who we could potentially do a contract with.
Okay, y'all, y'all can work it out, you know, the best you see fit. I'm sure, I'm sure it'll be fine. Um, you know, as far as the dam and all over here is concerned, I guess something of that magnitude, if that was start to fail, the best thing you could do is warn people and try to get them out of there. I, I don't think it would just, boom, all of a sudden, you never know. I guess anything can happen when you got water involved, but that's a extremely catastrophic situation if that was to ever come to pass. Uh, that's all I have, so I guess we need to go in closed session. Alex, am I?
Uh, we need to end the board meeting and then reconvene as the personnel committee meeting.
Okay.
And the personnel committee meeting has a closed session on its agenda.
So, uh, if we don't have anything else, I'm, uh, hand adjourned.